Item number seven, discussion concerning the Fire EMS department, including budget, funding, manpower, service, territory. Staff?
I'm gonna go over a couple of spreadsheets deal of talking about Fire and EMS, how complicated this can be. I'd like to just first start out, it's complicated and there's many factors involved in figuring out our Fire Department and EMS staffing and funding. I don't want to get in a lame game, that's not what we're here for. It's looking at where we're at, where we're going, and then trying to develop solutions that work for our community. One thing I will let you know, in the interim, it's not an answer, but working with the Fire, we have funded a additional firefighter EMS to provide some relief while we're studying this issue and trying to come up with a more permanent solution. And that additional firefighter will be a floater and be assigned as need to different relief shifts where firefighters are off duty. So at least that gives us a little bit of relief by adding that one back. Doesn't answer our problem. The, as we all know, in 2017, in our mid-year budget, we had reduction of force where we decided not to re-har three firefighters through attrition. That has been further complicated by our current situation or compounded because we have two vacant positions. We had one leave probably for higher pay. We had one leave because they relocated with their significant other. And then we have one out on injury leave and we have one on maternity leave. So all these things compounded makes the situation even more serious than if we had not had one or the other reduction of force or all of these people out. Going over this, what I've looked at is from 2008 coming forward to our current year budget. And you can see, starting in '08, we had 22 employees. In '09, we went to 25. We remained at 25 employees till 2014. Then we went to 28 employees in the Fire and EMS and we remained there until we did our mid-year budget. And as you remember, we eliminated 11 positions, not just the Fire Department, but across the board. We had four layoffs and then seven positions that weren't filled, we froze those or eliminated them. So now we are currently in the FY '18 budget of 25 employees in Fire and EMS. If you look at the next roll down, we try to give the history of EMS incidents and Fire incidents. And if you look at '09, we had 1,728 EMS incidents and 297 Fire incidents, for a total of 2,025. If you come forward to 2016 as a comparison, the EMS incidents, 2,336, Fire incidents, 378, or a total of 2,714 responses.
Could I ask a quick question on that line, Adam?
Yes.
So how much of that is in our school district area?
It's a little bit difficult to address because the way we've kept our records, we have not separated it out as much, but Eric might be able to give us some idea.
When you ask a person, you have to physically look at every address and map it. It's roughly around 15% yearly payroll would be each year that's outside that. A lot of that is centered on town lengths, the town foil, I mean, the population centers. I mean, there's not just a ton out in that incorporated area, but the bulk of our responses are Guthrie proper areas to the south, just due to the level of population in those areas.
So my understanding from our last workshop was that the majority of what was going on was outside of Guthrie city limits. That's what we talked about in the workshop.
Well, outside of city limits, but within the school district because our EMS covers the Guthrie's school district.
Oh, because if we gotta go straight south, it's still in the school district.
You roughly got, I don't have a good, I don't have a number I can document for you, but you know, we're sitting here at town of 12,000. We've got roughly 20,000 residents between here and the county line.
Yeah.
So we're serving an area that's bigger than our city limits.
Yeah, the EMS district is larger than the city limits.
But anyway, if you look at this, over that period of eight years, our EMS runs have increased by 570, 32%. Our Fire runs have increased by 81, 27%. So they went up 651. Of that increase, 88% of the increase ties back to EMS. So that's where we're really growing is the EMS service. Fire runs, yes, it's grown, but not to the same degree. Well, that tells you, we're putting more and more pressure on the equipment and staff we have when you continue to grow at that rate. So yes, there is a problem, clearly, on what we're doing. Now, if you look at revenue, in the blue, the ambulance fees have gone from 426,000, and I'm rounding these off in '08, to 711,000 in 2016, for a growth of $285,000. I think the Fire Department has done some things. They went to outside billing. They have been more diligent. Of course, they make more runs, so revenue will go up. But looking to the ambulance fees as the solution, there's not a silver bullet. It's gonna take many things to solve this. But when you look at the reimbursement rates for Medicaid, Medicare, the negotiations with insurance carriers that are very large, the opportunity to generate more money from the fees for ambulance service is pretty limited going forward in the future. Now, if we make more runs, of course, it will go up. But you can charge all you want, but the reimbursement rates still go the same. You'll just get a smaller percentage of your invoice paid. The EMS district, which is the school boundaries of the Guthrie Public School, they can levy up to three mills of property taxes inside the city limits and outside the city limits in the school district. At $258,000 from them in '08, and it has worked its way up to $350,000, or a $92,000 increase. Again, as the value of the improvements in the school district city go up, then that three mills will generate more revenue, but it's not gonna grow fast enough on its own to address our problem.
So Leroy, let me ask you this. On EMS alone, we spent $848,000 in '16, right? Is that correct?
Expenditures are on down below, so I'm not sure where you...
Talking about on EMS, I'm talking about the Fire EMS revenue. Okay, so that's not the expenditure, I'm sorry.
That's the revenue.
That's the revenue.
Now, in addition to the contract we have with EMS, they also, because they can only give a certain percentage of their revenue each year, and then they accumulate and over time, they give us money to buy ambulances. And the periodic, you could see in '08, I highlighted in yellow, we got 89,000 and Six got 114,000. And we got some grants and some FEMA reimbursements in '16. That was an outlier or one-time funding, 295. I didn't use those in my calculations. And again, I will admit, I'm not an economist by any means, and this is an oversimplification problem, but I'm trying to give you a feel for what's going on. If you look at general funds, in '08, we had to, and subsidized is probably not a good word to use, but we had to invest 7,000, 12,000 out of the general fund to supplement the revenue stream in the Fire Department. If you look in '16, that had went up to a million two. So it had grown 470,000. And you can see, if over to the mid-year adjustment, we had to put $1.6 million, an additional 400,000 in from the general fund.
So we really don't know, if we look at 2016, for example, as a year, we don't know between the revenue and the expenditures, what was EMS versus what was Fire, right?
They're not...
What I'm trying to find out is, what we, here's, I know, I see what we brought in on EMS, but what did, what was the cost?
Part of the problem we run into, Brian, is it's hard to break it out because every person on our entire staff is cross-staffed.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So there's, when you look at your manpower, in terms of salaries and benefits and personnel costs, there's no real accurate way to put a manpower cost on there because they're doing both functions.
Well, but if we took the runs, we could actually take the incidents and formulate that into an equation based on the Fire, but not near, not really, because if you have a house fire, that's a three-hour deal. Field fire, that's four days.
Same thing on an ambulance call. It may be a 15-minute deal if it's here in town and they don't want transport, or it may be a three-hour deal if it's a law, you know, a long-term accident on the interstate or something.
It's difficult to segregate it out.
So what did...
I can tell you this, 86, last time I ran the numbers, about 85, 86% of our activity on runs is related to EMS.
So there's what I'm, that's kind of where I'm going with this. Let me ask a question...
Well, I have one more, may I ask a question on top of that? You do log all your runs out and back, though?
Yes.
And time in. So you do have some way to...
Find out.
Find out where that is. I mean, you said it was basically 15, well, that's out and outlying.
Average ambulance call is anywhere from, and there's so many variables on there depending on where the transport's made to, you know, they're anywhere from, you know, a short one here in town is probably a 45-minute ordeal to an hour and a half. So you're looking 45 minutes to 90 minutes, roughly. If it goes to the city, you're talking 20, 25 minutes down, 20 minutes back, however long you spend on scene with a patient, and then how long it takes you to get in and out of the ER where you're taking the patient.
Now, that's billed all at the same amount, though, I take it, over that time?
Well, there's mileage, but the base rates are, well, there's a basic life support base rate, there's an advanced life support base rate, and then there's mileage, which we have a mileage rate fixed in our bill, but Medicare and Medicaid has their own rates that we're forced to take, so, which are significantly less.
So what do we do before our own EMS service?
Funeral homes. I'm not lying. We literally, the Fire Department literally took EMS over from the funeral homes in the 70s.
So the funeral homes did it?
Yep, that was pretty much...
But what does everybody else do? I mean, it just seems like we're so far underwater on this deal because of the EMS deal. I'm not faulting anything.
Well, no, it's, I mean, you look at the metro area and you've got Emsa, which is getting a large subsidy from every municipality that they're serving, which it's tagged on to their utility bills. You look at Stillwater, they're in a similar boat. They have a service, but it's funded by utility revenue via the rural areas on their electric bills, and then the municipalities are putting it on their water and sewer bills.
Before we get too far off, if I can finish my presentation, I think it will give some clarity to some things. But anyway, if you look at general fund, the increase from '08 to '16 was 470,000 additional dollars from the general fund, which represents 55% of the additional money going to pay for Fire and EMS. So the significant amount of increase has brewed the general fund, not through other sources of revenue, the Fire District, or the EMS contract, or the fees. Now, if you look at expenses in '08, and I've broken them down into personnel services, material supplies, service and charges, capital outlay and debt, and total expenditures in '08 was just under 1.5, 1,000,000.05. In '16, it was just under 2.8 million. So in that eight years, our expenditures had grown 1.3 million, or roughly 87% or 11% a year. And 65% of that increased expense was personnel, which would be understandable. Then what I tried to do is look going forward. And if we continue to increase at that pace, not compounding it, but just add 11% for five years, our costs would roughly go up $300,000 on average each year. If we were going to fund that out of sales tax, out of the fund, our sales tax just to fund the Fire Department and EMS would have to grow roughly 6% every year. I don't think it's a sustainable model.
It's not.
It's not gonna happen.
One of the problems, too, earlier, you've got a city of roughly 11,000 people, but we're serving an EMS district where you got roughly 20,000 outside the city limits between here and...
But nobody can give me that number of our cost versus revenue on that, you know? And that's a problem. It's like any other business decision, Leroy. I need to know, just like in my business, what's my cost versus what's my revenue? I mean, what's my revenue, my margins, everything else?
I understand that, and we're trying to get to that. We're just getting started.
I know.
I mean, you know, it took me a couple hours to put the spreadsheet together.
I thought you'd done this in 40 minutes.
I think the point...
Can we have another workshop on this? Is that what we need to do, probably?
When we get there. If I could finish, I think what this shows is, yes, there is a need for manpower. I mean, our service calls have went up. You can't continue to serve what we're doing with the manpower we have. Question there. The other thing is on the funding side, is yes, if you need manpower, but you got to pay those people and you gotta have a funding source to do it. There is probably not a silver bullet or one thing. It's gonna be a combination of things we do. What I think we need to do at this point is step back and do a five-year budget and project what our revenues and costs, and try to do as much cost centers as we can to show where those costs can be divided. Some of it will be more scientific-based and some of it will be estimated because it, as we indicated, it's kind of hard to separate Fire and EMS. But I think we need to set, step back and do a five-year budget and look at all options. You know, how do we enhance revenues? You know, we do have the, the three mills we're getting from the EMS district that is the school boundaries, but we also have some rural areas that aren't in an EMS. You know, it looks like that would generate roughly $106,000 if we could come up with some mechanism to get three mills there. Well, $106,000 is not gonna address all of our problems. You know, additional sales tax from our economy as it continues to grow. The state legislators looked at approving a property tax for cities to fund public safety, Fire and police. You know, I think we should encourage them to continue to consider that at the state legislature because mills doesn't generate the kind of revenue stream it takes to fund this type of service. And, you know, we're gonna have to look at revisions to our EMS service area. That's not something that I'm proposing or recommending, but I think we'll have to look at all options as we go through this. So we're gonna need to take some time to go through this. And I think the first thing is just to sit down and do a five-year budget so that we can kind of see where we're gonna be over the next five years, and then look at the options we have to add staff, but how do we fund it?
Yeah, and I thought in our last workshop, Mayor, when we gave a certain timeline to redraw the boundary, does anybody remember what that timeline was?
Well, it was anywhere from a year to six months.
So, that's what I'm saying.
But, but...
So why do we serve areas?
But the problem I have, that I think we need to step on, is we can't go to the areas that aren't in EMS district and say, okay, if you come up with a mechanism that through three mills and that generates $106,000, that's not the answer to our problem. But once you tell them, hey, if you do this, you're golden. We're gonna serve you, but you need $300,000 from that area to make it work, then, so I'm not sure that we want to go forward and say, well, you do this, you're done. I think we gotta have a more detailed answer of what it takes to serve that area so we don't commit ourselves that is not financial, financially workable.
Yeah, I think the millage rate issue certainly comes into play there.
Well, let me jump, let me give you one clue, okay? You have to increase tax revenue 6.13% this year to meet the budget.
Right, and we're getting 3%.
6.1. So time is not on our side on this deal whatsoever. And I just don't want to see us all of a sudden in '19 going, well, hell, we didn't increase the 6.1. Now we gotta increase another 5.8, which we gotta take the deficit from the 6.1 and add it to the 5.8. Now we're at 9.3 or whatever the...
Why do we serve those areas outside of our...
Because we have to. It's a law, right?
No, we don't have to do anything, do we?
Chris.
I think we do.
Chris, prior to 2010, we had to, the state had a law that the closest licensed service had to respond. So it was all geography-based, and that's how jurisdiction that we have now. In 2010, they passed a House bill that allowed agencies to draw their new boundaries, submit them to the State Health Department and say, here's what I'm covering. Currently, we have a contract, the city does, with the Logan County EMS District I-1, which is the Guthrie School District boundaries. That's where the three mills of tax revenue contract to us. Now, we cover, that's not even a half of what we cover...
Right.
Geographically. So all that outside of there pays no, no form of subsidy or support currently.
And all that outside there costs more to do than it...
Well, it's further distances, the roads are rougher.
Right.
You know, it's a large unincorporated area.
A lot of expenditure.
And I think that, part of what Brian was asking for, I know that you have the basic database, but it's all, it's all on paper. It's all manual. To go through that and identify how much of expense and workload is in those areas specifically, I think you have a general idea.
I mean, we, we have a general codes. That's about as close as we can get short of plotting each individual call on a map and looking, comparing it to a school district map. It's about it.
Yeah, because what I'm saying is if we had the number and you said, and took Steve's recommendation, or whoever's it was in workshop, I'm not throwing you under the bus, whoever it was, and redraw the boundary, for example, say, boom, there it is. Do we problem?
No.
What, what do you mean, no?
I think that's what...
Do we solve our financial problem by redrawing the boundary, period? Maybe.
Not necessarily, because if, if we don't, we're not, the only thing we're gonna gain is a little bit of man-hours and wear and tear on trucks for not going out there. But we're gonna lose revenue.
We want the little bit, yes, though.
Yeah, my understanding was that was the majority of what we were doing is going outside of our area.
No, the majority of our call volume is within the current EMS district.
It's a complicated issue. It's not one item. Now, you know, after I'd done this in two hours, I figured I had an hour left. I would come up with more.
There's more.
Yeah, but I, after I did this for two hours, I thought I'd complicate your life a little more and do one on the Police Department. Again, not trying to lay blame on anybody, or I'm just trying to give the facts of where we're going and, and what is involved. But if you look at the Police Department, in '08, there was 27 employees. You come forward to 2017, there are 40 employees. Now, some of those are funded by grant positions. We added dispatchers. They're not all certified law enforcement officers, but we have a big growth in staff. If you look at, when you adjust out the victim advocates, balance against women, grants, and reimbursement from the school district for partial refunding of our cost of officers, our expenditures in the Police Department went from 1.3 million to 2.6 million. So you had 100% increase in costs over a nine-year period. Again, if you look at that going up 11% a year, grow your retail sales tax 6% roughly every year. So if you add Police and Fire to sustain the kind of growth that we've seen in the past, you're gonna have to grow the sales tax 12%, 11% to 12%.
And if you miss it one time, you have to add that following year.
Absolutely. So this is not a sustainable model either.
No.
So we need to come back and look at a five-year budget for the Police Department because historically, our sales tax has not grown 12%. And we do have a few other departments that put money into it as well.
Oh, you mean, we can't do just Police and Fire?
I don't have any solutions.
Something for water lines.
But what I was trained to do tonight is, one...
Roads, bridges.
You know, we have a need. There's more pressure on safety in schools, the number of people we have, a number of ambulance runs we have or EMS, there's pressure. We can't handle it with the manpower we have. But at the same time, we've got to figure out an affordable approach that we can live with as a model. So I think, if nothing else, hopefully I've showed you, we can't continue down the path that we're going. And we're gonna have to come up with some answers. I think we got a good team to try to look at that, but we're going, it's gonna take a little time because, one, we're gonna have to look at, you know, what size area can we serve? How do we fund it? And what's the right level of manpower that we can afford? There's, there's a lot of things to look at.
Yeah, and we're getting ready to hit the 25% through '18. But we are up in tax percent.
We are. We're up 12% so far this year.
Right on schedule.
Yes. But Tenny didn't get any of that.
Tenny gets enough.
That's why I started saying, you're not gonna get that new bull.
Yes.
Well, I think that...
Get him new shovels.
I think Leroy, what you, what you, what you present out here is, and I know it's just two pieces of paper, but I know it took an awful lot of time to put that together. There are still questions that we have, that we need to have more, more data points to massage. I know all you are doing that. But clearly, we need to be looking, projecting out, because I said it four times, that the current models in both of these cases are just not sustainable. Something needs to happen. And it's, and it's not gonna happen just on the revenue side. It's gonna have to happen on revenue and expense. And, and it's gonna take a good team to make it happen. The good news is, we've got that good team. So it's not all bad news. It's an opportunity.
And I would like to give credit to Eric, our Fire Chief, and Kim, our City Clerk, because they helped round up some of the numbers and helped me put this together and reviewed it and commented on it. So I appreciate their assistance in putting this together to present to you.
Okay. Any other questions?
So all of a logs paper at this point, or have we switched to digital at all?
It's all in the log.
Okay.
It makes it a lot easier to pull logs. The outcome of the data reading just isn't collected as detailed as it needs to be. And that's because that's, that's just what's collected on medical stuff. It's not what school district...
Okay. So it has the address in there?
It does have the address, yes.
I may be able to help you out a little bit.
So, so when you like, well, let's cut revenue, or let's add another position, if you see me cringe, I hope you see why.
Yeah, the big, the big picture is much more complex.
Yeah, but what I don't want to do is, I don't want to have a workshop like we've already had on this, and then have this, and then all of a sudden be sitting here in June and still haven't done anything, because by then, we're halfway through the year.
I think from staff's perspective, unless we're addressed otherwise, I think our next step is to sit down and do a five-year budget for both Police and Fire so that we can try to do some estimates of what our revenue stream and what our costs are going forward. And then we can play with that five-year budget to look at revenue enhancements or cost savings, what we have to do to make it match with the potential funding that we have available.
I have one final question, and I don't even know if it's permissible for me to ask, but do we have any idea, estimate, like an average of what our firefighters make annually and what our police make annually?
Yes. Well, I mean, we can give you the history of the pay, but... Yes. Well, I mean, we can give you the history of the pay, but we'll also have to put it in perspective. I mean, that we pay comparable to wages in Logan County, but that's not who we're competing against.
Yeah, that's not a livable wage.
Yeah.
Well, but that's...
But that's not...
That's why I, that's why I'm asking the question.
But, but, I think we need to do it where you've got some comparison, because we don't compete with Logan County to get firefighters, police officers. We have to compete with Edmond and Oklahoma City. Now, we'll never probably be able to pay the same as Oklahoma City and Edmond, but some of the, we should try to be competitive with them. So, we'll need to prepare something where we can put it in some kind of framework or perspective, what we pay versus some of the other cities. Because if I just give you the wages of firefighters, it might look outlandish, but then you see what fire areas, you can understand that those positions demand those wages.
I was just trying to determine if it's a livable wage by itself.
A five-year, I'll tell you what, a five-year patrolman in Edmond, and I know this because a family member's applying there, is it 96 grand on the police department, five years?
Yeah, I think, I think as Leroy, I don't think, I don't think the expectation is, is that we can raise rates to compare with Edmond. On the other side of the coin, it's been my observation, is that when we have a vacancy in fire and police, is that we have a fairly large pool of applicants. That tells you something, too. So, and that might be something to, another piece of, another data point to take a look at, but...
But we don't want to be a training center for Edmond, Oklahoma City.
No, no, that's very true. Very true.
Correct.
Very true. Okay, any other discussion on item number seven?
No, that was a long one, I know.